Please attend the call meeting of the City Council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM, Tuesday, October 14th, 2014, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Okay, we'll do it this way. Mr. Chair. Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Ms. Randall.
Yes.
Ms. Sumis.
Here.
Mr. Edmonds.
Present.
Mr. Meeks.
Mayor Wright.
Present.
John.
Thank you. Thank you, Deborah. The first item on the agenda is the recognition of our Team of the Quarter. And for those that don't know, our Team of the Quarter is the Assessor's Office.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
A grand celebration last week. The mayor was present, Elizabeth was present.
I was there.
It was really just really great. And you have been recognized not only locally but nationally and internationally. And you have a certificate to show for it.
Yes. Going to do a little update this evening.
All right. And they're really pros. I mean, I really appreciated the comments that council was saying, members of council, that gee, I get calls about everything except assessing.
I don't get calls about anything until I'm like... Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, colleagues, and guests. I'm here this evening to give you an update on our Certificate of Excellence in Assessment Administration. Just a little tiny brief history. Back on August the 11th, I made the announcement that after countless hours of hard work and unprecedented dedication to the task by my staff, it is my pleasure to announce that the City Assessor's Office has been awarded the Certificate of Excellence in Assessment Administration by the International Association of Assessing Officers. So we're here basically to give you a little update. In August, the 24th through the 27th, we were fortunate enough to be able to attend the 80th Annual Conference on Assessment Administration in Sacramento, California. The highlights of that were three functions that we were recognized at. The first was the awards luncheon, which recognizes not just the people who received a Certificate of Excellence in Assessment Administration, but also those hard-working persons who have received designations. I'm fortunate enough to have one, which is the RES designation. Then we had the CEAA luncheon, and that's the luncheon that really recognized us as the recipients of this award. We were recognized there and afforded the opportunity to talk to other jurisdictions, not just nationally but internationally. And we received a lot of questions from a lot of other jurisdictions. And then the closing banquet is where the actual presentation took place, and which I'm going to share the plaque with y'all in short order. We were recognized at that banquet, which had over 1,200 participants at it. And it wasn't just fun, although it was fun. We were also able to receive a lot of continuing education in residential and commercial assessing, which is required in order to retain your state license and your designations, which are also required. It also afforded us, one of the best things, was the networking opportunities that we had, not just with people within the United States, but also internationally. There were people there from China, Korea, New Zealand, Australia, Zimbabwe, Canada, and there was a couple Slavic countries, but I, for the life of me, I can't remember their names, and if I could, I couldn't pronounce them anyway. And it was really nice. They had a tremendous amount of interest in the City of Portsmouth Assessor's Office and how and why we strove to receive this certificate and what exactly was involved and was it as in detail as they felt like it was. So it was really an excellent opportunity to have our name not just here, but other places as well. As I stated, there were 1,200 attendees from around the world, and there were a number of vendors, which was really good to see because they were displaying the latest technologies that are used to assess mass appraisal, which we do do. We've got a couple of pictures we're going to show you. This was actually at the closing banquet. Beautiful. And the next one is when we actually received the banquet, and we were very, it was a very pleasant surprise. Up here, you can see a quote. And after we received this, we were interviewed by IAAO. And one of the questions that they asked us, and they said, which was really the most important question that they wanted to know, was what was the most valuable thing that we learned about assessment administration in our particular jurisdiction? And I had no idea it was going to be displayed for everybody to see, but anyway, this is what I said. "We were able to assure ourselves that the improvements to the policies and procedures that have been implemented over the last three years had ensured that we were meeting the goal standard in assessment administration. Additionally, in examining ourselves through the submission, we were better able to understand the importance of keeping pace with today's technology."
Good.
And a little bit more of an update. Public relations, we are displayed on the IAAO website. We're going to be featured next month, November, in the Fair and Equitable Magazine. And there was a very, very ambitious campaign that has been launched by LaVores Pace and his staff, and we would very much like to thank him for that. They provided newspaper ads, a digital billboard, they added the emblem, the CEAA/IAO, to the city and the Assessor's website, and they also did a spot on the At Your Service TV for our TV station. And I would also like to take, thank Tim Everly for a nice newspaper article that he did for us, and we hope he'll give us another nice one.
That should be a strong plus.
And for those of you who have not seen the digital billboard, this is it right here. It was on I-264. And we're going to be moving forward quite quickly on this. We're already working on implementing new policies and procedures. We've already set up a timetable and goals for keeping our recognition for five years. It seems like a long time, but it's here before you can blink an eye. Our continuing public relations campaign and future IAAO recognition. We have been contacted by IAAO about our digital billboard. We had been asked at the time of the luncheon that anyone who had anything unusual that they were able to do with their CEAA. And they were interested in what type of support that they actually received from the jurisdictions, the powers that be. And so, right after this went up, I contacted our mentor, and she was so impressed with it, it was given to IAAO. They contacted me for permission to use this. And they have also contacted me about using Portsmouth as the featured jurisdiction at the CEAA luncheon and next year's conference, which is quite an honor. So we're going to continue to spread it around. And does anybody have any questions or comments?
Real quick, was there a technical piece where you actually had a Q&amp;A session when all the other jurisdictions were there? Was it formal or informal?
It was informal. It was done at the luncheon. And there were a number of people there, some of them who had been back to, for their five years for recertification. We had people from, that were interested in how long it took us, what was involved, did we feel like it was worth, you know, what came out of it? And we were able to explain to them at that time, you know, one of the things that came out of it was our wonderful pamphlet that we have, that we are able to give to the citizens. It's also available on the website. And how important it is, you know, with just transparency, you know, letting the public know that we're there and we're there working for them to answer questions. And all they have to do is come in and sit down. Every single neighborhood, we have spreadsheets of. We can show every sale that's taken place for a number of years. You know, was it a valid sale? Was it a short sale? Was it a...
Foreclosure.
A foreclosure. Was it a trustee sale? All of these things. And the citizens have been very receptive of this. Some of them have not even come in to question their assessments, but just to get a better understanding of what we do. All the staff is very well-trained and know how to sit down with a person and discuss these things with them. And they know that they can always call me. They're always told that. If you're not satisfied with what we've told you, please contact either Billy Butt or Janie Culpepper, the Assistant and the Assessor, and they'll be glad to help you with it. And we are. We don't always have all of the answers, but I'll tell them, you know, give me a few days, let me do some research, let me get back to you, and we'll see where we're at. And so far, it's worked very well.
Good.
Good.
Well, like I mentioned at the end...
Isn't it beautiful?
Yeah.
Yes.
Excellent. Good job. Like I mentioned at the Team of the Quarter ceremony, and Elizabeth echoed it, that, you know, we're very pleased with your office and the professionalism that you provide. But the most important thing is the number of phone calls that we're no longer getting because people either understand what it is you're doing or understand how that whole process works, and it just makes you feel good. And so, thank you and congratulations all of you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, the next item deals with an item that's on your regular session agenda. It's item Z1402, which is a zoning application. And because many of you were not on City Council back when this was a superfund site, thought it would really be good to give you the history that relates to this particular site.
Should've brought this person in, fine.
Yep. Yeah, she could tell firsthand. And James is going to take us back a couple of decades into time and give you the background on this particular site. It is this item here, the ABEX Corporation, and with this map that goes with it too. James?
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. If your briefing tonight on the environmental status of the ABEX is still the front side. Okay. Here you have a map of the front area, here where the line of patrol is, former foundry site, ABEX lot, Washington Park, where the fire station is, Afghan Playground, residential residential area down in here.
That's how it looks today.
In between 1928 and 1978, the ABEX foundry operated and produced journal bearings for railroad cars. As part of their operations, they disposed of furnace and sand-laden waste with heavy metals on-site. Back in 1986, the EPA began to do some testing and found lead contamination on-site, the ABEX lot and some of the adjacent residential lots, and started to do some cleanup there. And the cleanup was at varying depths, but down to 12 inches. As they continued to examine the area and look at the site in 1992, they found some additional areas that had high lead concentrations and also other heavy metals. They contacted the ABEX Corporation, and then they did some additional remediation back in the Washington Park area and also Afghan Playground area. In 1992 and 1994, there was a two-year period where they were working on remediation plans. They contacted the residents, face-to-face contacted, they submitted an invoice to the residents, they gave them their plans available for public access. What they came up with, they created areas zoned residential data completion of their preliminary design at that threshold of 500 kilograms per kilogram. They excavate from the surface down to the water table. Those were in those residential areas, for those areas that were commercial and/or industrial based, those non-residential areas, except for the ABEX lot. They had that same excavation rate down to a foot. Then anything from a foot down to two feet, the threshold was a little bit less. So those industrial areas, they implemented land use controls, implemented prevent contamination for excavation below two feet. So as part of that plan, they put in place some institutional controls. One of those controls is our city code, and our city code requires for anybody doing work in that, any type of excavation in an area, you need to get a permit. Along with that permit comes certain requirements for conditions of how you do the work, notification requirements to the public, notification requirements to other city departments. There are also, for any properties in that area, there are provisions that go along with the deed. So basically, what happens is if there's a deed in that property, there are those restrictions, but also the description of the remediation activities that took place back when they did all the excavation cleanup. Additional requirements include placement of warning sheets in any of these areas where you actually do excavation prior to putting black clean soils. The controls must be sufficient to ensure that soils below the remediated areas with permanent covers in all areas are not disturbed without proper notices, and that soils are managed in a manner which will not endanger the public disturbance. What that refers to is any areas out there that have buildings, parking lots, anything of that nature that weren't remediated as part of that original cleanup. Should you go in there and do something, that refers you back to that city code section with the permit and all those other EPA restrictions and requirements that are on it. So getting back, getting to the permitting protocols. The maps that John referred to, that's part of your handout packet, basically has the boundary of that site on the map, along with contact information for the engineering department. So you can contact us if any work start occurring, should you need to do any work in that area. So once again, it's performed by the engineering department. The applicant provides the description and the location of the activities, and publishes that notice to the local paper. Our staff notifies EPA, and then we coordinate all the technical requirements related to that work. Then at the appropriate time, we publish our intent to issue that permit in the local newspaper. Then five days afterwards, we issue the permit. And for emergency work, such as waterline breaks or things of that nature, there is a streamlined process. So in summary, soils in this area were remediated to varying depths as required by the EPA. There are land use restrictions in this area to make sure that it's non-residential in nature, so commercial, industrial, and any other non-residential type activities, and this is a requirement by EPA. We have institutional controls put in place to protect the public safety. There's a permitting process that you need to go through if you're going to do any excavations in this area. The proposed development that's on your agenda later is consistent with the EPA restrictions and our permitting protocols.
Yes. When that, things start happening there, would there be individual checks or systematic checks that go on in that area?
Our inspectors are trained to notice and make sure that people are doing what the permit requires. But also, when we send that notice off to EPA, EPA has people on staff that come into town occasionally and check to make sure that people are doing what they're supposed to be doing as well.
Another question. Thanks, James.
Good. Was this helpful?
Yeah.
Yes.
Good reminder. Essentially, what we have is a site that was a superfund site that's been remediated. Now it's a brownfield and ready for development under certain conditions. And the development that is being considered by you tonight meets those conditions. Okay? The next is a briefing by Ed Hargis, our police chief, on the Raids Online. This is not a new crime activity.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, good afternoon. Wanted to come in, I'm going to give two quick presentations, actually. I'll be part of the first one, and I'll give the second one. First one's going to be on our Raids Online system. We partner with Bear Analytics, and what this is, is we supply them our records management data. And this is available to citizens from a webpage. They can go on there, type in Portsmouth, and they can do their own crime mapping for specific neighborhoods or the entire city. I have Scott Cravey with me this evening. He is a supervisor for our crime analysis unit. This is, Scott does a whole lot of work behind the scenes for how we deploy personnel out onto the street, identify crime patterns. Scott's been working with Bear Analytics for about six or seven months now, trying to get this up and running. Scott's going to run you through, just as if you were a citizen sitting at home at a computer, how to run through the system. We'll do a real quick live demo. Once we get done that, I'll talk about our Eagle Eye security camera presentation, and then answer any questions that you may have.
Okay.
Scott.
Good evening, Scott.
Hello. Good evening. How are you doing? Good, how are you guys? So as the chief was saying, it took a little while to get this up and running, but I'll just show you a quick demo of how this works. First of all, we joined several other cities in the state or jurisdictions, including six that are part of Anthony's Crime Analysis Network. That includes Franklin, James City County, Newport News, us, York County, and Suffolk in the process of bringing this in as well. This gives us as analysts the ability to see what's going on just across the city line so that we can identify patterns that may be affecting neighborhoods in our city. As soon as you come to the Raids Online page, you can either enter an address on the left, if you have the exact address you want to go to, it'll zoom down to that neighborhood. Or you can choose the city from the dropdown by just clicking on Virginia in the map. It'll pop up with all the cities that are represented, and then you can just click on Portsmouth from there. As soon as you do that, it pops down to the Old Town area because that's considered the center of the Raids Online. I think they actually use our address for that. And then, from there, you can just choose the type of crime you want to see. All crimes, or most crimes are represented here, with the exception of a couple crimes that we felt like should not be included for victim safety and privacy. From there, you can choose either pre-selected, this came out a lot smaller than I was hoping for on the PowerPoint, but there's a pre-selected timeframe you can choose on the left. You can choose one day, one week, two weeks, a month, and you can go up to, I believe, six months from the dropdown. And altogether, we have five years of data within here. We've uploaded five years. Then you can, or you can manually choose the date range instead of doing a pre-selected. The citizens also have the ability to look at a density map, so you can actually pinpoint certain hotspots within the city. After you've chosen an area, so for example, in this map that you see right here, you can actually see the display of all those crimes in a list by just clicking on the data grid. It does readact the addresses, so it won't give the exact address of the crime, it'll give the block number.
Okay.
Again, for the safety of our citizens. The next tab at the top, which is Analytics, it gives the ability to see what types of crimes are within that map, the day of the week, the time of day, and then within the day of the week, also the time of day. So you can see based on whether it's Tuesday during the afternoons or Fridays during the mornings. It'll give that within that display. Last component of it is citizens have the option to sign up for alerts. You can actually set it up to automatically deliver to you on a certain day or based on certain types of crimes. And the benefits to this is that it provides timely and accurate information to our citizens, provides crime information for newer potential citizens. This helps us as well. We get a lot of phone calls every day. We're not able to give specific information on crimes, but we try to direct them to a resource. This will be a huge resource for my office. It gives comfort to citizens because now they have the ability to see what exactly is going on around their house. It also provides our neighbors the ability to look for information or look for activity, identify activity just across the line, and then contact us if they need more information. And it gives us that ability with the other cities as well. And it's completely free to us. It's available on an app through the iTunes or Google Play Store. And in the future, they're adding Good Deed Daily. They're really happy or really excited about this because it gives people the ability to identify something that somebody's doing within the community to help other citizens.
Good. Any questions? Are you manually uploading all this yourself into this site, or...
No, sir. We started with that briefly when we were trying it out, but we've, through one of our sergeants, he has helped us to automate this so that it automatically uploads every four hours.
Is it coming straight from the cars or call centers or where?
No, sir. Every time an incident is put into our records management system, it, once it's approved, then it's based off of that. Every four hours, we pull everything that's been approved.
So give then a year-over-year data?
As far as our year by our lookout...
Comparisons, trends?
It could give us a basic trend, yes, sir. The only thing is, like I said, we do exclude certain types of crime because of the sensitivity of those crimes. So we could use this, for example, for UCR report of what we report to the FBI.
We are online now, are we not?
Yes, sir, we are.
Yeah, and the mobile works. The thing works.
So, sorry, I didn't realize that was my cue. So basically, you get the map here, you just click on Virginia, and here we are in the list. So we just go to Portsmouth, and this shows you right now, I'm not sure of the timeframe, it defaults too. I'll take, we'll take a look at two weeks of data. And these are the crimes that it's looking at within that two-week timeframe. You can actually click on any of those as well and get the information from within that. So you can see that the address where it happened, of course, just to the block number, time of day that it was reported, and the report number.
It also designates the part of the city where you have your biggest concentration.
Yes, ma'am.
You can always pick up on that too, from your targets.
Correct. So we can actually come in here, I think this is what you're referencing, the density map?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. So we can do this, and we can see where our hotspots are.
Yes, and the hotspots, you can pick them up.
We also have the ability to upload layers if we wanted to in the future. For example, if we wanted our beats, which we chose not to at this point, but if we wanted to put certain information out, we have that ability.
Good technology.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Great tool.
And I'll be trying to get with the civic leagues as well to put this information out to them.
Good.
Thank you.
Just a follow-up to the Raids Online from our webpage, you may have used...
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have to switch.
Okay, you got it. You got it.
Work with us, Don.
You may have had the opportunity to use my neighborhood coming from the police department's webpage, and my neighborhood actually downloads data or takes data from our CAD system, the computer aided dispatch. So citizens calls for a police officer to respond, may go in as a person shot. When the officer's get there, it's actually a flight, so it's not a malicious loading aggravated assault type scenario. But if you use my neighborhood, you're actually getting what the call was listed as as far as the officer's responding out to. Raids Online actually picks up the records management components. So there's a police report written, it's approved by the supervisor. Every four hours, Raids Online downloads that information. So you're getting real information four hours, as quickly as four hours.
And what it really was.
And what it really was. It's giving up them.
And we're not paying anything to belong.
This is a free partnership. There's obviously from Bear Analytics, we could go in and request other services, but right now, this is a free component. And in the very near future, there'll be a quick one or a webpage that goes yours as well. It's not there yet, but... Any other questions, Raids Online? Just going to move into a real quick briefing on the Eagle Eye, which is our port security camera project. I've given presentations before. This was in reference to installing five cameras along the waterfront seawall area from about midway around Swimming Point all the way down through High Street Landing. The cameras have been installed, all the electricity's been connected, and the servers have been installed here at City Hall, which is where the images will be stored. So we're just about ready to go live. With that, we've just been awarded, those are the police and fire departments every seat, Homeland Security awards. We're going to be able to install two cameras at the boat ramps at City Park as well as part of this project down the line. So I don't have a date for specifically this. I think it's going to be coming to the council to approve the grant in November timeframe, and then we'll go from there. So our timeline for completion of the Eagle Eye first phase, the five cameras, the server, between October 28th and 30th, we're going to finish off running the fiber optic down Columbia Street. Columbia Street with the utilities construction. That'll get us into our dispatch center. November 4th is when the software for the cameras will be installed. Remember the presentation I gave you before, if the camera is turned towards a residential property and zoomed in, it actually masks out the property purposes. We cannot look into any residential property. So that'll, all the software and masking will take place November 4th. And with everything going lined up, November 7th, we'll actually be able to turn the key on and start recording images from the cameras, the five cameras. The images go to the server here at City Hall where it'll be stored. They also go to the dispatch center, where we have two large screen TVs that the dispatchers can periodically monitor. And it also goes into the emergency operations center as well. I would roughly estimate probably around April next year, the two cameras at the boat ramps will get put onto the system and get up and running around that timeframe.
And that was through Homeland Security?
Homeland Security, Port Security Grants, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Chief, have you made inroads to chatting with the folks at Admiral's Landing and Harbor Towers to give them their own briefing on this?
I will, since we're getting closer to turn the key on, once we get the system, the masking into the system where I can actually show them a live picture and explain everything, that's when I'll go out and do that presentation.
Before they...
I can talk about it.
Before they fuss at you.
If they actually see what's happening, then they'll get a better understanding of it.
But you are in contact with them?
Yes, I've been in contact with them.
A lot of people look at this from a privacy issue. If you just look like, I think today on television, there was a fellow in New York that came up through the grading, and threw out a smoke bomb, and they had it on the camera, and it was just, oh.
These are pantill zoom cameras, they'll be scanning the whole area. However, if we have an event such as High Street Landing, we can actually turn and focus the camera on the event, so.
In the City Park boat ramp, there's been reports from citizens that overweight trucks are damaging the ramp, and that'll certainly be able to record that as evidence, so.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Paul, Ed is there, I'm going to ask Ed and Dennis to give you an update on our bedbug infestation.
Give you an update on the bedbug situation. Late Wednesday, early Thursday, I think Dennis Bagley's group, Alicia Hart, through the exterminator, was able to identify bedbugs in the dispatch center. By Friday, 6:30 in the morning, we conducted presentations with all of our employees on the midnight shift, day work and evening shift, as we moved through Friday. Our original plan would be to shut down dispatch as of 4 o'clock Wednesday morning, a couple hours. However, due to concerns raised by the dispatchers over the weekend, by 6 o'clock last night, we made the move and switched to our alternate site. So we're dispatching currently, or now, from the alternate site. Dennis's group, and I'll let him talk about it, has lined up the exterminator to get in there about midnight tonight, and clean up the problem, and hopefully eradicate the bedbugs out of the...
And we'll need to be out how long, Dennis? A couple of days?
It's actually just four hours, but because we're spraying a chemical in the area, the chief wanted them to be out for a 24-hour period after that. So I think we're still moving to bring them back in at 7 o'clock, on the same schedule we were on before. We just got them out earlier than we anticipated.
Why don't you explain to council and the public the eradication method that we're using?
We're going to use an aerosol method. There's a couple of different ways you can approach that. We talked with our exterminator, and our exterminator recommended, because of the makeup of the furniture and the walls, and everything that goes on inside of the radio room, that aerosol treatment would be the best method to approach the eradication effort. So everyone's out, they'll go in at midnight tonight, and they'll spray aerosol material on all of the furniture. They'll wrap the stuff that we can take out. There's a couch and some chairs that need to come out, because that's where we spotted the originals, we originally spotted the bedbugs. They'll come out, but they'll wrap them in plastic, so if there's anything on that item, we won't track it throughout the building. All of the other items will be treated in place. And then, we'll let it air out, and then we'll bring, and we'll do some steam cleaning, we'll do some other cleaning inside of the building, we'll bring the folks back in. But the issue with bedbugs are that they travel from one place to the other. Deputy city manager says they're hitchhikers, they jump on your clothes, and they hitchhike to wherever they're going to go. So, of course, first of all, they got there because somebody brought them in from home.
Yeah, I was going to ask, did we identify the source yet, or you'll never do that?
Such a situation.
Yeah, I know.
It's hard to do that.
Lock them up.
We met with the staff, and we've explained the process, and that they do come from home. And we provided them with some plastic bins to put their clothes in, their outer clothes and pocketbooks, anything they might bring in from home, to try to keep from bringing anything from home into the building, and vice versa. So with that being said, once we do the exterminating, and then we bring them back into the building, there's always a possibility of re-infecting the building. And if that be the case, then we'll have to go through all this exercise again. We'll be continuing to test for bedbugs with a carbon dioxide test kit, it's an item that puts out carbon dioxide, because that attracts bedbugs. And we'll do that throughout the EOC in the dining area, outside of the EOC where we spotted the bugs at, and then a couple of other locations where there could be people gathered for lineup in another room across the side. So we're going to monitor that, even though we haven't seen any bugs there. So hopefully, if there are any that are brought back in, those monitors will let us know that they're there, and we can go through this effort again. But again, as long as there's bedbugs at people's houses, they're still going to continue to bring them in, and we just have to be vigilant and continue to monitor until we know that there's none left, because we don't see any in the...
Talk a little bit about the educational process with the employees. I know it's sensitive and all, but somebody needs to...
We went in, Alicia Hart, myself, the chief, and Captain Wilson...
I mean, we had the same issue with schools and...
Sure do.
Captain Wilson from the police department went in. Our first meeting was 6:30 Friday morning. We met with the shift that was going to come on in the day. And we went through all of the precautions that they could take. We gave them information about websites they can go to, reputable websites, because there's all kinds of websites out there, but CDC, EPA, those types of websites that are credible. We gave them a link to go there, so they could do their own research. But we also gave them the information that was on the website, face-to-face. Once that group was finished, the night they were going into the EOC, and the night group was coming off, we met with that group. And the next change in shift was 2:30 that afternoon. We met with two groups there, or actually one group, because the day group we'd already met with. And then, there were some other folks that were off, maybe not scheduled to work for a couple more days. All the information we gave them, we gave to Captain Wilson, who in return emailed all of those folks, and gave them the same information that the people received face-to-face meetings then. And so, we tried to keep them, you know, we want to say, what we know, you know. And I think we did that, but of course, when you're dealing with bedbugs, it scared anybody. And we didn't get, I felt like our response was pretty calm, but as everybody else starts talking to these people, more questions came up, and the chief become inundated with people who were concerned about bedbugs. So he made that decision to go ahead and move quicker, because Verizon was able to switch the trunk lines from the 911 center here to our backup site. And we can do that in an emergency. It's a pretty seamless effort, because it's been, it's part of our emergency plan. But the problem is, whenever you switch 911 lines, there's always a possibility of having a problem. And, you know, when you, one of our roles as government is to provide a 911 center, protect our citizens, and provide that health and safety component. And without a 911 system that's operable, we can't do that. So we need to be really careful about doing that, and how we do it.
What precautions are we taking to make sure they don't hitchhike to the backup facility on the riverside?
Well, the same things in place, and it's pretty much the best practice, and that's to have a container that you put your belongings in. Each one of those people were assigned those, we said, this belongs to you, and this is how you use it. But if they have them on their clothes, there's really no way to stop that.
That doesn't, I mean, with these containers, if you put big bedbugs in the containers, are they going to stay in those containers?
Well, we've told the folks how to clean the containers, we're going to heat, well, all we can do is educate the people. I can't go to their houses and make them do that.
Yeah, I know.
We're giving them the information, and that's what makes bedbugs so hard to deal with. Nita has dealt with them through the school board, and she can tell you, this was an 18-month process, 12 to 18-month process that they went through. I don't think that that's going to be the case here, but it certainly could be, because we're going to have to just be vigilant and continue to monitor it, and deal with that. I mean, one of the issues that I think you're headed to with that is, are we contaminating the fire station? Our hope is no, but is the possibility there? Yes. But we will continue to monitor that, and we'll do the same type of testing there. And if it does, we'll address it at that point. But, you know, we don't have an infestation, and I want to be clear about that. We spotted four, four bugs is all we've identified. And the area is probably 4,000 square feet or so. We found four bugs, and that's not to say there's not more there, but that's all we could see. And we had an exterminator go in there on two different occasions, because these complaints have been coming into us for about a week, week and a half, prior to us identifying them. We had an exterminator come in two different times, came back and said, there's no bugs in the building. It was not until the third time, when we actually identified that there were bedbugs. So the reason I say that is to let you know that it's not an infestation. There are bedbugs there, but they're not, you know, crawling all over the tables and...
Is this something you can see, or is it like a no-see?
No, you can see them.
You can see them.
And the important thing, bedbugs, what used to kill bedbugs was an insecticide that you can't use anymore. And because of that, they've come back. And just because someone's house may be infested, doesn't mean that they've got a dirty house. It could have been that they have been to the best hotel around, and picked up some hitchhikers, as Nita calls them. And so, it's not, it's not an indication of a dirty house, it's an indication of a pest that's hungry, that's looking for a good meal.
Okay.
And I must say, I mean, this has been, I am so proud of the team and the professionalism that they exercise in pulling this off. It's easy to get historical about bedbugs. My wife will not let me sit down on a bed in a hotel room until she does her bedbug check. And so I have to go stand in the bathroom where there's no bed. So they have been really pros about this.
Good job, Dennis.
Thank you. Let me say one thing about that. We were fortunate, you know, people ask me all the time, say, what do general services do? And I say, well, anything that doesn't fit nicely into one of the other departments comes from general services. And I wake up every morning thinking that, you know, I've got my arms around exactly what general services is, and then, you know...
Boom.
You never expected, when I woke up Thursday morning, I never expected to be dealing with a bedbug epidemic. But fortunately, we have folks on our staff that have done that before, when they were working with the school board, Alicia Hart and Caprice White, and they did, it really kind of came together all day. All day Thursday.
And Nita?
All day Thursday, we spent...
Bedbug queen, huh? Better.
All day Thursday, it wasn't, actually, I think I sent an email to John, it was roughly 11 o'clock that night, and we had a plan together, and I think he in turn forwarded that to you all about 11 o'clock. We spent the whole day, you know, educating ourselves about bedbugs. And the one thing that's important for everybody to know is that bedbugs do not, I mean, and we had an expert tell us on Thursday in a meeting, he said, if I had to be in a room full of bedbugs, or a room full of mosquitoes, I'd pick the room full of bedbugs, because they don't carry disease.
Yes, that's right.
And that's an important thing to know. I mean, there, nobody wants to get bit by anything, but these are not the disease-carrying bugs that are going to have a bunch of people sick behind it. It's just irritating to have this.
Okay.
That's a very good analogy.
Great job.
Good, I like that.
We have a grand event that's going to take place tomorrow morning, and I'm going to ask Mallory to tell you about it.
Thank you. Yes, shifting gears, shifting gears from hungry bedbugs, let's talk about hungry shoppers. I have just been out to the new Kroger Marketplace this afternoon, with the store manager and their PR people, and they're very excited, and are looking for a large crowd tomorrow morning at 6:50, yes, 6:50 in the morning, because the store opens to the public and to shoppers at 7:00 AM. So all are invited, it is open to the public, they are excited, and the store looks beautiful. They've got everything in place that you could imagine if you're hungry, from organic produce and a sushi bar, a fabulous 30,000-square-foot section of the store that is devoted to clothing and housewares, so it's not your typical grocery store. So please, they promise, I've encouraged them to have coffee for everybody at 6:50 in the morning. So please join us for the ribbon cutting.
Stay up here. I want to, I don't see Doug Smith. Doug, you hear?
He's worn out.
Worn out?
Yeah.
We've had a great team, first, to get this development. Think about it. Kroger intends to have retail sales of a million dollars a week.
Yes, you will.
Think about the times that you go to the supermarket, and how quickly a million dollars, you don't get there with a carton of milk and a carton of eggs. And so, this is a lot of shopping.
Yes, it is.
So this is a big deal. And last year, when Kenny and I and the team went up to New York to the bond rating agencies, and we're sitting in downtown Manhattan, and we're telling, on the 42nd floor, looking down on the Wall Street District, about our Chick-fil-A, and you think, really, is this important? Well, it is, because you get judged, a company chooses a new location based on the potential of that. They look at the demographics, they look at the purchasing power. And so, this becomes a big deal, and something that we have bragging rights for. And she was involved with both of these deals I just mentioned, the Chick-fil-A and the Kroger Marketplace. And getting them there, I mean, this was, we wanted to help them in every way we could to get them to the finish line. So Nita put together a team that was across many departments, to say, how can we help you get there? And that was just not one-sided, but the developers were in the room, the company was in the room. And this is a great example of teamwork, teamwork at its best.
And if I may add, when I saw the PR representative today, Carl York from Kroger Corporate, he reinforced the fact that the Portsmouth team, the building official, the engineering department, the planning department, has just been Johnny-on-the-spot and working with them to get to tomorrow's opening. So they were singing your praises.
Now, as you think about that site, it's a work in progress, because the street,
although it's got pavement on it, that's temporary pavement, so people can make their turn to get into the development across the street. Not to be outdone, there's another set of gas filling station going up at the Walmart. You want to brief on that?
That will be a Walmart, excuse me, a Wawa convenience store that is going in on a newly created out parcel in the Walmart parking lot. Wawa's been looking at that submarket for a number of years, and had an opportunity after some discussion, and some facilitation through our office, to create that out parcel there.
And then, James, the work won't stop with just the opening of the Kroger Marketplace. Then we have the whole Turnpike project that starts, that's around the corner. You want to just give a very quick update on that?
For the VDOT project?
Yeah.
Yeah, that is currently out for ad. I think those bids come in the end of this month.
Mallory's fit, then?
Probably by the first part of the upcoming year, they'll start construction, and so that corridor between Constitution and just past the CVS will be improved.
That's going to be a big deal.
It's going to be a big thing.
It's going to be huge for that whole area, and this just anchors that whole thing, but good deal.
Would that include that intersection there at Turnpike and Frederick is very dark?
It is.
So that will include new lighting and what have you as well, James?
Everything will be upgraded through that entire wall.
Okay. There'll be a major improvement.
What are we going to do with Frederick to Rodman? You have to have a four-wheel drive to get down there.
That's the next phase, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, and we really think that there are going to be new traffic patterns once this ERC project is completed, and people don't have to drive their 18-wheeler on our city streets to get from the port to the heartland of America.
And last but not least, a smaller item, but one of aesthetic value, the beautiful
plants that were there. And now we got these plants that look like Kansas wheat or something growing. Let me speak to that. We have not accepted that from the contractor, so. But to make sure that the place looks good, I gave Dennis the green light to go ahead and push elbow the contractor out of the way. It's not relieving him of his responsibility to get it screwed up. You want to speak to that?
We've started that today. We, the plan was to start this morning on the park side and then move to the median strip because we've been eyeing exactly what you're speaking of. And James has called the contractor on it. Contractors came up and they did some work, but they never really got it to where it needed to be. It looked beautiful the first day they planted, but it just went downhill from there. And we've got a plan in place to maintain it once we take it over. But we just felt like it was important because of the opening of the Kroger to have all of that area looking the way it should look.
So did they give you a plan and we approved what they did a while back and we just now had this aha moment, or?
No, no. Remember, let me give you a case in point. Remember a year ago, and I'm going to pick on Maryview, how that planning looked at Maryview? It looked pretty bleak. Go by there today and see how those plants have really matured. And you've got to give these plants a chance to mature and get to where they are in a mature state. So it's not necessarily a bad plan. The contractor, we have not released the contractor. He has not met our specs. So he's still responsible for getting the park right. But you know, there's, give those plants a chance to mature. And Maryview is a good example of that.
But the grass and some of the other stuff around there is dying out too, and that's not good.
There's that additional piece that he has left to finish where that house just became vacant. Finish off that one side.
They replaced it.
And I think his intent is, when he comes back in, to take that house down, to replant that one block, is to go back in and dress up the rest of it. And to Councilman Meeks, to your point between CVS and Alexander's Corner, we're waiting to hear back from VDOT on a brand application we have in for the baby.
Good deal. I asked you to stay up because last week we had the re-grant opening at Farm Fresh.
Farm Fresh.
And Dr. Edmonds and I attended and the president came in with a couple of corporate VPs and we had some very good dialogue after the piece. And they were very complimentary of how our city and they worked well together. And I took them back down memory lane when that was scheduled to be a target and we got left at the altar and how vital of a role that they've played in bringing back that area. And they were pleased to hear that the new president of Farm Fresh, she's been on board now, I think she said a year.
Yeah.
And they're doing some things. They spent about a million, a million two, and they're relaying out the place. And so all of these things speaks good. And I know you guys had a lot of work to do in that as well, back when we first started using that enterprise money with the loads and that whole piece. So again, thank you.
Place looks fine.
Very good.
Good. We have EDA meeting next week and so I'm sure we got some council liaison reports. That's all we have on the work session.
All right. Any value? Mike, yes, ma'am.
Are we on liaison report?
Yep.
Okay. I'm going to give my EDA report out there.
Okay.
Because it's mostly about the Kroger side of the public, hears all this again. But for the port, I did attend last week the Propeller Club's State of the Port Aggress. John Reinhardt, the new director of Virginia Port Authority was the guest speaker. It was a standing room only crowd at the Town Point Club. Captain George Watkins from our PPIC was there, several executives from West Marine Diesel were there. So Portsmouth was in the house. Lot of good information from John Reinhardt about the growth of the port and using PMT. He talked a lot about us having the ribbon cutting and the ship coming back over there. So it was good. Virginia Port Authority was very gracious about Portsmouth and how many facilities Portsmouth had and sat me at their table. So that was good.
Okay. Yes, Dr. Edmonds?
Councilman Meeks, I went to the PRHA meeting that they had with some, came up with some good information from that meeting. Talked about Swanson Home. Swanson's Home was built in 1942. It's older than some of us here at this table. And they're going to do some retrofitting of some of Swanson Home and Lincoln Park. They're going to tear down some if need be, but they're going to put all new appliances and things of that nature to make sure it's up to standard.
Now, Swanson Home is older than Lincoln Park, right?
Right, it's older than, yeah, much older than Lincoln Park. And so we were glad to hear about that retrofitting thing that they're going to do in that area.
What timeframe were they talking, did they say?
They didn't give us a time, do you recall?
They're putting the stuff out for bid right then.
Do they still have a HOPE 6 grant program that we use to develop Westwood and?
They have a new program out that was called Rat, the Rat?
Yeah, I can't think of it either.
They're looking to put to, it's like a HOPE 6 grant that they're going to do Lincoln Park with. And they have a partner already selected, Hunt Group out of Maryland.
To do the application?
Right, yep.
Yeah, that'd be good to get another one of those grants to...
Now, the company they selected, they've done stuff in Norfolk and this is like the group.
I said Westwood, I meant Westbury, anyway. But...
But yeah, that HOPE 6 is alive and well. Actually, we were one of the few cities in the country that received two of them.
Received it.
Oh, I know.
I received a phone call from Senator Warner on the second one.
Sure do.
They couldn't reach the mayor at the time.
That's right.
That was some good news.
And they've got a lot of praise on their properties around town like Westbury and those other places about how clean it is and how neat it always is when we go by it.
Well, when you look at what it was like before and look at what is happening now.
Big difference.
It's a totally new renaissance because they were detrimental to the appearance of the city. Now we have some crowns that we can brag on.
Okay. We got a motion. Go into close, somebody want to read that, take us in the close session?
Need to go into close meeting pursuant to Division of Virginia Code, Section 2.23711, both following purpose consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff pertaining to two matters of actual litigation involving the Fair Labor Standards Act and Hampton Roads Transit, where such consultation and open meeting would adversely affect the city's negotiating posture as permitted under subsection A7, and consideration of candidates for appointment to city boards and commissions as permitted under subsection A1.
Second.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Semus?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.